I call to order the January 9, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86. We're meeting in the Hinsdale Central Cafeteria and the time is 6:03 PM. Deb, can you please call the roll?
Member Pollak.
Here.
Member Camden.
Here.
Member Hurstman.
Here.
Member Cheval.
Here.
Member Hanson.
Here.
Member Howell.
Here.
Member Turick.
Here.
Board has a core present, seven members. We are ready to go. I'm going to adjust the agenda just really quickly and jump to a little bit of the President's report. We have a really special person that we need to honor today, and if I could ask Principal Walsh to come up and have the honors.
Just a quick, I'm not that special person. But thank you. It made me feel good. But in reality, we're here with Jimmy Lewandowski. If you can join me up here, if you would, please.
That is correct.
He's the special person. I'd like to present the Hinsdale Township High School District 86 Resolution, if I may. Standing beside me, whereas James C. Lewandowski, I never knew that, I just know you as Jimmy, is retiring with 39 and a half years of service as the grounds supervisor at Hinsdale Central High School Township District 86, DuPage and Cook Counties, Illinois. And whereas he graduated from Proviso East High School and in 1980 received a BS in Leisure Environmental Resource Administration from George Williams College at Oregon University now, whereas he began his career in maintenance at Hinsdale Central in June 1980. In January 1918, he was promoted to head to ground, and in 2010, he was placed in the supervisory category. Whereas he has always adapted to the ever-changing environment of high school with a positive attitude and has an impeccable attendance record. Whereas he takes the lead on all projects assigned and all tasks are completed to their standard that is requested or a higher quality if possible. Whereas he's a strong leader and motivates his crew in a positive manner on a daily basis. Whereas he is the president of the Westchester Kiwanis Club and the current sponsor for the key club, the Westchester Kiwanis Club. Whereas, as we wish him well in his retirement years, as he will be able to enjoy his line out train collection, boating on the lake near his summer home, and traveling in his newly purchased RV. Whereas therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education, Hinsdale Township High School District 86, that the appreciation of the administration of the district and the members of the Board of Education to express James C. Lewandowski for the contributions and total dedication he has given to the worthy education of the students of this district, and that this expression of appreciation and gratitude is made a part of the permanent records of the district, and that a copy of this resolution is presented to her, to him, by the Board of Education, January 9, 2020. Mr. Lewandowski, congratulations. Any words? Just want to say thank you to all you get over all the years, you know, the various boards and administrations, always been phenomenal for the district, for the staff here at the school, and hopefully that'll continue on for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of employees, and collective bargaining and deliberations concerning salaries for one or more classes and employees. Some may have a motion to adjourn to closed session for discussion and the exceptions noted.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Turick, second by Ms. Hurstman. Deb, can you please call the roll?
Member Pollak.
Aye.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Hurstman.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hanson.
Aye.
Member Howell.
Aye.
Member Turick.
Right.
Motion carries 7-0. The meeting will resume following closed session, and the Board will take action following closed session. Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86, the time is 7:10 PM. And please stand if you are able and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Prentice for good news. Thank you, President. At this time, we will start with Arwen McCourney from Hinsdale South.
Good evening. I am actually speaking on behalf of our Hinsdale South Board Liaison, Nadia Kindred, who could not be here today. So she did send her report and highlights that she asked me to share with the Board from her report. It goes back into November because that's the last time that the liaisons were here. But Nadia asked me to share that on November 26th, Hinsdale South held a cupcake gratitude day where teachers and administrators walked around the cafeteria to wish students a happy Thanksgiving and share cupcakes and model the idea that we are trying to practice gratitude in our daily lives. On November 26th, 15 juniors, including Nadia and seniors Billy Durkin and Signee Wayne, were invited to attend the WSC Leadership Retreat in Rosemont. We held our Breakfast Club Ceremony on December 3rd, where each department gets to choose one student who they feel best represents self-pride at Hinsdale South. Then on December 5th, we held our annual eighth grade family information night for the class of 2024, where we welcomed all future Hornets and their families, invited them to check out the school and get any information they need before fall 2020 rolls around. And then lastly, we just have very good news to share about our boys' basketball team. They're having an absolute phenomenal season. Yes, thank you. They actually just took fourth place in this prestigious Jack Tosh 2019 Holiday Classes and Classic, and they just missed making it into the championship game by losing in overtime. So we're just very excited to continue watching them. And again, on behalf of Nadia, that is our good news board report from Hinsdale South.
We have a Hinsdale South on. I'm going to turn the microphone over to our Board Liaison, Jackson Hughes.
So I'm just going to be sharing some updates from Hinsdale Central over the past couple months. So over winter break, there was a lot of events happening for Hinsdale Central. Even though we were off at school, many Hinsdale Central students were involved in a lot of activities that were going on. So first, our marching band had the privilege of going to Rome over winter break, and they were able to play for the New Year's Day Parade. I was fortunate enough to be on this trip, and it was an amazing experience, and all 150 band students who did go on this trip had an amazing time. Also, at Hinsdale Central, over our break, we hosted two different tournaments. We hosted our Holiday Classic Basketball Tournament, which featured 16 teams coming to here to Hinsdale Central to compete for three days in tournament play. Then also sticking on basketball, our girls' team this year is having a great season so far, and they're being much more successful than last year, and they're looking forward to the season continuing on its upward trend. And along with that, our Special Olympic Basketball Team is doing really well this season so far, and in fact, they have two games coming up this Saturday, and they're all looking forward to having a lot of fun. And then so our other tournament that we held over winter break was the 54th Annual Whitlatch Wrestling Tournament, which we held here, and it's a strong Hinsdale Central tradition that we have going on, and it was a great time. Now, looking into the future, January is very busy at Hinsdale Central. One of the main things that we have coming up is our Pack the Place Week, which is our spirit week, along with a multitude of activities that are going on. We have sporting events happening every single day that week, from wrestling to swimming to basketball and much more. And then Wednesday that week, we're going to be starting our All Schools Rock, Paper, Scissors Contest, which will go on for the rest of the week, culminating in our pep rally on Friday. And then that Thursday, we're hosting our Mr. Hinsdale Pageant, that is a fundraiser for our all-school charity. And then that Saturday, we're hosting our Winter Fling and Dance, which we're bringing back this year, which should be a very fun time. Now, just looking over to some student concerns from this, looking forward is that many students are anxiously awaiting the results of the calendar that is being proposed, as there are many freshmen and sophomores will be greatly affected by it, and we're just waiting to hear back from what is going to be going on. So that's all the updates from Hinsdale Central.
Thank you. Busy. We are moving on to audience communication. Audience comments will follow procedures outlined in Policy 2.230. The Board reserves its right to limit the total amount of time devoted to audience communication. In the interest of respect and civility, the Board of Education asks that speakers focus their comments on professional matters related to District 86. Speakers wishing to address the Board have been asked to sign in for audience communication. 10 people have signed up, and each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When your name is called, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and your topic. And the first speaker is Linda Burke.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year to all. Thank you, volunteer Board members, for your service. Not for the first time, we forgot some pretty important good news, and all the news, the good news is really good, but there's something really, I'm a total culture shock that we forgot this good news, that Central just learned that we have a Regeneron Science Talent Search semifinalist. This is known as the High School Nobel Prize. It was the Westinghouse when I was a kid, it was the Intel for some years. It's known as the Regeneron now. And when we had an Intel winner some years ago, I implored reporters to cover it. I implored our High School Publicity Chair at the time to release a press release. MIT didn't care what we, we're dumb enough to think, but how is it that we don't give any publicity to this? And why aren't we in full throttle to have our first Regeneron Science Talent Search semifinalist from Hinsdale South? The talent is there. Nothing is lacking but the interest and the motivation on the part of people who should be guiding this process. Just for a little cultural comparison, Westchester County, New York, a place so much like here that you might even run into someone you know if you go there. There are 33 Regeneron semifinalists, our topic on the evening news. We're, the only difference here, we have just as much science talent, just as many science facilities, but why is it that we just don't care? I don't understand, but it's not too late to do that press release and for reporters to find out about it. Okay. Next, I'm going to obviate my next remarks here. We have a problem with science curriculum, and it's not a communication problem. And the ritual sacrifice of one administrator will not make Physics in the Universe for All in any way okay, nor will it ever be accepted by this very highly educated and STEM conscious community. This has a substance problem. Just for starters, unpiloted, untried, still not fully written, and no one can even keep a story straight on exactly what it is. Is it 25% Earth science now, or something less? Or, and that's just for starters, not to mention the courses that will be lost that are actually very important in the kids' curriculum. So it's, we, one minute more of this is too long, because eighth graders are trying to register. All of Hinsdale South has this untried creature imposed upon them, and Central has, we think, a two-year reprieve. Please, Board members.
Thanks, Linda. Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Morton. And Linda, would you do me the time and hand Mr. Morton the microphone, please?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Good evening. I'd like to wish you all a Happy New Year. It's been about 30 days since I've spoken to you. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but an incident occurred as I was entering the Hinsdale Central High School that I spoke to a few weeks ago, and the disabled door access button is again inoperative. And so I took that opportunity to put my name on the list to address you tonight. I would appreciate it if we could look into that and come up with a permanent fix. I will also state my opinion and objection that physics in the universe as a school-wide offering, I believe, is short-sighted. I think you need to have multiple sequences to meet the needs of the students that come with disparate abilities and disparate goals. I did have the occasion over the Christmas holidays to have these discussions with a professor of petrology from Edinburgh University, and also a professor of chemistry at Baylor. And while it was a superficial, informal conversation, neither of them understood that this was an effective way to teach physics. And that's really all I have to say tonight. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Burke.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Burke from Millbrook. And on a positive note, in keeping with the gratitude that Arwen stated earlier, we should be very thankful to have two wonderful schools. I, for one, have experienced wonderful things from my daughter at Hinsdale South. I can't say anything negative about the physics at Hinsdale South. I'm very happy. The teachers are responsive, the academics are rigorous, but I have questions still. My question is, what is next? I have a son in seventh grade. I'm really concerned about how is he prepared for science coming out of marker school? And what is he going to be seeing at Hinsdale South when he's a freshman? The time is of the essence right now. If you get rid of this one over here, you're essentially firing a president in the middle of a war. That's the only analogy I have to compare it to right now, because it is obvious from all these people here that science matters, and probably more than sports, extracurriculars, and other things. That's just the way I see it and the way it's perceived. So I want to know, what is your Plan B? I want to hear it tonight. I want to know if you are getting ready to change administrative or proposing administrative change, what have you done to prepare yourself for the next steps? We are all watching. We want answers, and we don't want to wait for those answers. We expect answers now. You have all had time to think about this. You knew that we were going to come tonight with questions. The only positive thing I've heard last of a board meeting was back when, 2018, when President Carpenter and Camden admittedly spoke to the public and gave honest-to-God feedback, honest talk about the curriculum. That was very refreshing. Thank you, Mr. Camden. Now, we want to know more. We need to hear your feedback on how you're going to make sure that every student in the district gets not only what they need, but what they want. In addition, we're waiting for those electives to be aligned. I'm waiting for you to offer some electives at South that are not there. You need to get creative, you need to figure out the schedule, and you need to figure it out now.
Our next speaker is Carla Pinekind.
Yes, Happy New Year, everybody. Obviously, with this gray hair, I had my kids a long time ago, here, my baby is 35. They were brilliantly prepared from this school. Both of them went to top schools and found the colleges easy because of the work that was done with them here at Central. But the problem is, I thought I could stop going to school board meetings, and the problem is that there is all this dissension and confusion and, quite frankly, frenzy because of the way this was rolled out. You have a woke community, a community that really, really cares about education. They really care about math and science and everything. I actually only cared about English, Social Studies, and Art, but my kids still took science, and they did great at it. But my point is that when you're making something that people perceive as giantly different, then you need to communicate it. You need to communicate it by sending letters home, putting it in the newspaper, having numerous meetings where the community can come in here and then ask questions. There has been, I mean, obviously, people are completely frenzied and confused and scared. I always say, I only bought here for the schools. You can get more trees in Joliet and even a bigger house, but the schools, so don't shake up their people's confidence, and they're so confused. This was so great for a number of years to just sit in my house while you were all having your meeting, because everything was going smoothly. So I looked to this board to pull it together and to hear what the, to tell the community exactly what you're doing before you roll it out, and then let them give you their feedback and let them ask questions and for you to answer them. This is a very well-educated community that cares about education, and so that's what they want. I don't have a game in this. I assume that you're not going to take down the school and ruin everything, so just do it for the people who are dying of anxiety about this. I'm done. I deal my 49 seconds.
Our next speaker is Ursula Tannaway. Can I ask you just to hand those to the Board Secretary? Thank you.
Thank you. So that was just a copy of a petition that I started, and we've been having this conversation for quite a while, so that's my public show of support. I don't know if you've been receiving an email every time somebody signs it. If you have, I'm sorry. But that's about 500 signatures from people who have signed a slightly longer version of this letter that I wanted to read out loud for the record. Dear members of the Board of District 86 Board of Education, thank you for taking a few important steps to begin notifying district employees of their exposure to ethylene oxide, particularly in signing Resolution 20.20, and sending notification letters to a small subset of retired employees. As you know, ethylene oxide is an air gluten that is known to cause cancer at very small exposures. According to a risk assessment performed by the U.S. EPA using 2018 emissions, cancer risk was elevated for anyone living or working in the area surrounding Sterogenics for at least six miles, which includes South, Central, the Transition Center, and administrative buildings and grounds. Calculated risks continue to have non-negligible effects for about 25 miles around, which essentially includes all of Chicago. The reason we're asking for an expansion of employee notification is that individuals can take proactive measures once they know about their exposure, namely physicians recommend greater attention to breast cancer screenings for women and increased blood cancer screenings for everyone. This can be included as part of regular well visits if the individual knows to ask for them. The follow-up of subtle signs for other cancers, including cancers of the stomach, pancreas, and brain, can be followed up, where these symptoms might otherwise be neglected until more advanced stages of the cancer manifest. Additionally, knowledge of ethylene oxide exposure gives individuals the information they need to pursue personal injury claims against the polluter if that's appropriate in their case. The district can play an important role in disseminating this health-impacting information and has financial, in terms of health insurance costs and moral reasons to do so. Indeed, the Board recently agreed that communication with impacted community members is desirable, particularly in Section 7 of Resolution 2020. While we applaud the initiative to contact about 200 former employees recently, records indicate that more than 1,600 known current and former employees have been impacted by ethylene oxide and deserve the courtesy of a letter from their employer informing them of their exposure and directing them to outside resources for further information. We at Stop Sterogenics would like to offer our knowledge, expertise, and resources to further assist the district in fulfilling this important moral obligation. We're here to help, and we're looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Avon Barrett.
An effective school board plays the watchdog role in keeping our school district on track, setting policies that benefit the entire school community, and hiring supervising and holding accountable the one person who runs the entire district, the superintendent. The job of the school board is to ask questions and represent the interests of all stakeholders. It is not to lead by ego or to blindly trust the experts. However, if the argument is to continue to be made by some board members to trust the experts, then this school board should put in place experts who have breadth and depth of experience running a district of this size and academic calendar. I request this board to do the job they were elected to do by initiating a formal search for two positions, one for the soon-to-be vacated position of Dr. Baker, and more importantly, one for the superintendent. A formal search will allow this board to vet and interview candidates that come with the level of expertise required to do the job and do it well. This district is not a place where one can learn on the job, test new edu fads, use students as guinea pigs, and then subsequently leave with destruction in their wake. Our students, all of them, at both high schools, deserve to have educators leading the charge to provide academic opportunities that are evidence-based and proven to empower and advance their educational experience. This is the case with the science alignment curriculum, the science alignment we're currently ongoing in our district. On January 7, 2019, just one year ago, embedded in a long document posted for your review was the real plan that the two former Science Department Chairs had developed. It was a multi-strand plan that would have been similar to the one at Nutria, offering more options for everyone rather than less. This plan was never vetted by the Board, even though Board Member Pollak publicly stated she liked the direction the plan was going, but wanted to know what it would cost. The administration was tasked with coming back with the financial information. Did they know? The next time you were given information was on October 23. The multiple strand proposal had been shelved and replaced with the single strand PCB. Why didn't Superintendent Prentice do what you tasked her with last January? Why didn't she present the financials to you on what a multiple strand sequence would cost? Why didn't even a single one of you ask her to explain why that strand, multiple strand plan, had disappeared? I'm asking you that you direct the administration to suspend in its entirety the rollout of the Earth Science-Based Physics in the Universe plan tonight, and come back to the Board at the next meeting with the information you requested one full year ago. Until you take the time to discuss the original multi-sequence plan and review the costs of implementing it, you should not move forward with any plan that reduces choice for any student in this district. Stop the PCB rollout and initiate national searches for the most qualified candidates for superintendent and assistant superintendent of curriculum. It is not too late to do the right thing. The only question is, will you?
Our next speaker is John Surrick.
Hi, thank you. I'm always kind of rambling, I apologize, but you know, that's just how I am. I do want to cover a couple of points. First thing is, you know, with the holidays, I had an opportunity to talk to a lot of neighbors from a broader area than I usually do, and it was expressed to me that there's still a lot of families who are concerned with the equity of the course offerings between the both schools. I don't know how many of them have communicated to the Board. I told them that they should use those opportunities to communicate to you. Some are fearful. I don't know why, but that's the reality. Something else that came up in some of the conversations is even more disturbing, frankly. Unfortunately for families who have kids in colleges, sometimes they get their grade reports back this time of year. And there were a few families who said their kids did so poorly that they won't be returning to school. I know that anecdotes are not data, so I don't know, you know, how that breaks out percentage-wise from one part of the district to the other, but that's a concern. And as I expressed previously, the amount of effort it takes to really deliver a high-quality science education and cost, it has to be something that the district's concerned about. Towards that point, I know we've only got about a minute, I thought back to something probably a lot of people have seen, Stand and Deliver. It was the movie about Jaime Escalante. It was set at Garfield High School in Los Angeles, and really launched Jay Matthews on his career as an education writer, and he still holds that role with The Washington Post. Post. And I continue to read his columns kind of religiously. One of the most interesting things is, as far as data-driven conclusions, he still believes that kids who take the AP test, regardless of how well they do, are much better prepared for success in college. That reason he believes that is because it's based on a body of research that includes over 300,000 students, mostly from the state of Texas, who have done that. It's extremely well-researched work, and it's never been refuted. It's very different than the Race to Nowhere and sort of the Bring Things Down kind of thing. Towards that end, what I would ask is that our district use its alumni networks at both schools and reach out to kids who are a couple of years out and see how their experience correlates to what we should be doing. That's all I ask. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alan Ruby.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Alan Ruby from Burr Ridge. I believe that the individuals who have been badgering you for the last couple of months have eclipsed the merits of Dr. Baker's science curriculum proposal. And I further believe that minor adjustment could turn it into a model for other school districts. A common complaint is that Physics Honors is no substitute for AP Physics I. The reality is that Physics Honors covers about 80% of what students need to know to pass AP Physics I exam. The missing content is in the areas of angular momentum as well as in deeper coverage of Newton's laws of motion. Imagine what it would take to close that gap, that remaining 20%. How about an optional summer school course or an after-school co-curricular activity covering those topics for students who want the AP credit and already have gone 80% of the distance? Offer such an opportunity to students after they pass Physics Honors, and I bet they will sign up in droves. District 86 would end up with 10th graders ready, willing, and fully prepared for success on the AP Physics I exam, something it doesn't have now. Furthermore, these students would have open field running to achieve further success in grades 11 and 12 with AP Physics C or AP Physics CM, which would also be part of Dr. Baker's proposed science curriculum. In addition, District 86 could run a couple sessions of the AP Physics I course at each school to give Physics of the Universe students a subsequent shot at AP credit as well, just like it does now at South for students who begin with geophysics. That's not a big deal. In the short time that she has been here, Dr. Baker has provided immense service to our community in identifying inequities between our schools, inequities that have languished year after year during the tenure of her predecessor. Yes, she's kicked over the hornet's nest and exposed some District 86 dirt that has been overlooked for decades. Make no mistake, that is what is at the root of the complaint against her tonight, the prosecution of a whistleblower. She has now provided us with a solid and workable proposal for science curriculum equity that would also improve AP science opportunities in a school district with a ridiculously imbalanced school enrollments. You cannot profess a commitment to curricular activity and fail to appreciate her contribution. You should not be meeting tonight to discuss Dr. Baker's termination. You should be meeting to discuss how large a bonus to award her, as well as calling the rest of the administration to task for weaponizing their historical negligence in assault on a staff member who is trying to fix the problems that other staff members have created. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Adolf Galinsky. I have three children, one currently attending Hinsdale South. Related to my comments, I have degrees in mechanical and bioengineering. Physics seems to be a difficult topic for our community. AP Physics C is a rigorous course covering three topics: mechanics, electricity, and magnetism. It's equivalent to one full year of physics in an engineering school. Only calculus B.C. students qualify to take AP Physics C. We have 123 calc B.C. students at Central, and only 44 of them are enrolled in AP Physics C. For the rest, their only AP physics alternative is AP Physics I, which will not be recognized by engineering schools, no matter how well they do on the AP exam, because it is algebra-based physics. Lost in the rhetoric over the new science sequence is the recognition of a new AP Physics course added to the curriculum this school year at Hinsdale South. It's called AP Physics CM. Described in the program of studies, CM focuses an entire year on the mechanics portion of AP Physics. It's open to students concurrent with honors pre-calc or calc AB. Under the new curriculum, AP Physics CM offers more students an opportunity to acquire AP Physics credit, credit recognized by engineering schools because it is calculus-based, not algebra-based. At Central, we have 218 students enrolled in pre-calc honors and another 204 in calc AB. That's 422 students currently enrolled at Central who, under the new science curriculum, could have a shot at AP credit in physics at an engineering school, an opportunity they do not have today. District 86 may finally be catching up to the many forward-thinking schools throughout the country already offering AP Physics CM. Slowing the rollout of the new science sequence means more students will miss out. I am very disappointed to read misinformation and half-truths about the new science curriculum on multiple Facebook pages. I don't think I've seen, I don't think I've read a single post from the self-appointed science education experts in our community on the addition of AP Physics CM and the strong value it provides pre-engineering students in the middle of the spectrum. Dr. Baker worked to uncover and fix curriculum problems like this in District 86. Not renewing her contract is a huge mistake. Dr. Baker has focused on curriculum review, alignment, and renewal in line with the most current standards which District 86 desperately needs. I hope there is a clear plan to stay the course and bring equal opportunities to all students in the district. Equity is the right thing to do, and I expect this board knows it's a legal requirement in Illinois. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Michael Mokecki? Mokecki? How do you do?
Close.
Close, okay.
Hello, my name is Michael Mokrinsky, and I'm out of Burr Ridge. So many people were skeptical, who were skeptical about the referendum, but ended up voting for the referendum, did so because we knew that curriculum equity was now a priority for the board and that an administrator, Dr. Carol Baker, was being brought on to drive a common curriculum initiative. If she is no longer driving this, what is the plan for curriculum equity across the schools as we are all one district? All students in D-86 must have the same opportunities that we know that they currently do not. I am shocked to hear that the board is now slowing down curriculum equity. I have children that are in elementary school, and I was hoping curriculum equity could be reached across all of D-86 before my children attend high school. I simply don't understand what we are gaining by slowing down to maintain the status quo. This is disparity across the entire district and across this curriculum equity, especially the science curriculum between our two schools. This board has a mandate to bring curriculum equity to all of our students, including my students who will eventually be attending D-86. All students, regardless of which school they attend, should have the same opportunity, which is driven by curriculum, and the goal of curriculum equity for all students in D-86. I'm also disappointed and embarrassed by how a small minority of D-86 residents have used a personal attack to railroad Dr. Carol Baker simply to accomplish their goal of keeping the status quo. If this board and the leaders of the administration, given to the demands of this small minority of D-86 residents who are using grandstanding to maintain the status quo and slow the progress of curriculum equity to all students, this board is only encouraging further bad behavior. I simply expect more out of this board and this administration. Progress must continue on curriculum equity for all D-86 students. Thank you.
Those are last speaker. Do any board members want to comment on anything they have heard during the audience communication? Do any administrators want to? Principal Walsh is.
Yes. As a parent of a child with a handy in a wheelchair, I am appalled at the fact that our doorknob was not open or accessible, our access button was not accessible. I've already addressed it in a tone that I feel was appropriate. I will be addressing it again in person tomorrow, and it will never, ever happen again. And second, in regards to Herbert Wang and his recognition as a scholar, we just learned yesterday, I used our first board meeting to let Jackson do his report, which he submits a week earlier. There is still a further competition that Herbert is eligible for, which we should learn on January 22. I hope to have a full news report on Herbert on January 23. So nobody was neglecting anything. I did tweet it out, as did Mr. Jessica Cole, and we have all the intention of recognizing Herbert. We're already working in on our science department on how to recognize him as well. So thank you for bringing it to our attention, but I am on the game. Thank you.
Superintendent Prendis, I would just like you to speak a little bit about the curriculum equity and who's leading the curriculum equity, et cetera.
Sure, thank you. The alignment, just to remind the board, that is the Goal One work, and this summer we reorganized that work and we created something called a learning leadership team, which has been presented to the board. And that work is currently, has been led by our two building principals and our assistant principals for instruction and our department chairs. And so that transition actually started last June, and so all of that work has been happening, but it has been happening under the direction of our assistant principals for instruction with our building principals.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda to committee reports. First one is the PTAC, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Prendis and Committee Chair Cynthia Hansen.
Okay, just to, it was mentioned earlier that students and families, I'm sure, are really concerned about what's happening with the calendars, so this is an update on that. So the Parents Teacher Advisory Committee met on December 11 of 2019 to discuss the potential changes for the calendar year of 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23, to accommodate all the work that needs to be done for Central and South in conjunction with our future-ready facilities. At that meeting, we had more than 50 students, staff, parents, guardians representing PTAC, the principal student advisory committees for Central and South, the Hinsale Central boosters, the Hinsale South boosters, and the Hinsale Central PTO, that department meeting. They received a presentation about the calendar options and discussed them in table groups. The table groups unanimously supported the calendar option C, which would lengthen the school day by 10 minutes and eliminate four school days in order to extend the summer break in 2021 and 2022 from 10 weeks to 14 weeks, which would help us to complete the work at Central and South on time and budget. So that's what we did then.
And then I can just follow up in terms of the next step. So the, because that was, that came from that group and impacted some of our collective bargaining agreements, as I shared in the past, this past week back after winter break, the HHSTA leadership met with all of their members and gave them the opportunity to do a survey to rank these three different, in terms of their preferences. And then that will be discussed at our negotiations meeting on Monday night, because one of the options does impact the collective bargaining agreement. And as our desire, we will bring a recommendation to the facilities committee meeting, which is next Friday, for first view, and then we'll come back to the board on the 23rd for a vote.
Thank you. Now, report of the Closed Session Minutes Review Committee. Chair Hirschman.
Okay. School boards of public bodies are required to review their closed session minutes every six months to determine whether any of those minutes no longer need to remain confidential. Our board, our committee, had its semi-annual review on Wednesday, December 18, covering the minutes from board meetings for the period of February 19, 2019 through October 23, 2019. And after reviewing those minutes, as well as minutes that had been held confidential or minutes from the previous time periods that had been retained as confidential, it was the determination of the committee that the confidential minutes from the most recent period, as well as those minutes that remain confidential from previous periods, will continue to remain confidential. We also discussed establishing a procedure for the collection and retention of closed session minutes, as well as the recordings of closed sessions. Under the Open Meetings Act, meetings of public bodies held in closed session must be recorded, and public bodies are required to retain those recordings for a certain period of time. And after that period of time has completed and certain prerequisites have been satisfied, those recordings can be destroyed. What we are in the process of doing is reviewing the recommended materials from the Illinois Association of School Boards regarding the detailed procedures for making those determinations of retention of the recordings, as well as the process for continuing to review our closed session minutes. And the proposed procedures that have been provided to us by the ISB are now undergoing some review by our administration, and they will be, once we've tailored them to meet our needs, they'll be put in place as well. Anything else? Oh, at our, at our next board meeting, which is a regular action meeting, the committee will present to the board a formal resolution regarding the conclusions of the committee as to the closed session minutes from the most recent review session in the last six months. That will be brought before the board at our next meeting on January 23.
Great, well, five of three, there you go. So we're ready to go to six, which is an action item, the School Maintenance Project Grant. We will, the board will now consider approval of the district's application for 2020 fiscal year School Maintenance Project Grant, which is a dollar-for-dollar state matching grant program that provides awards up to $50,000. If the district receives a grant, the money will be used to address items identified in the 2017 life safety report. So may I have a motion to approve the district's application for the fiscal year 2020 School Maintenance Project Grant?
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Turk, second by Mr. Camden. Can we have some discussion?
So the state is making $44 million available to school districts for the purposes of supporting maintenance projects. The state will award on a priority basis based on, the first criteria is to districts that experience some type of disaster, creating an emergency situation. The second tier of award is for districts pursuing health-life-safety projects, which we submitted our asunder in the 2017 life safety report. Obviously, we had a number of items that we could have chosen from that still are being addressed as part of the referendum. So we submitted based on replacements of railings, ballisters that are not in compliance with today's code. They were obviously in compliance with the code when the building was constructed. So those items are being replaced in the summer of '21, and so we're submitting the grant to help support paying for those projects.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? And W., call the roll, please.
Member Pollak.
Aye.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Hirschman.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Held.
Aye.
Member Turk.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items consist of items, minutes, business affairs, personnel, and administrative tasks that are routine in nature, as well as items that have been discussed with the board and are now presented for approval. Any item may be pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion and consideration. All items on the consent agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed. All items on the consent agenda are approved with a single motion unless removed before the roll call vote. Does any board member have, wish to remove an item from consent for a separate vote? Okay, seen none. W., call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, did I not have a motion in a second? Consent agenda, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Camden, second by Mr. Hell.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Member Hirschman.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Member Turk.
Aye.
Member Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries seven oh. The next action item, ready for it to be moved up. Here we go. The board will now vote to approve a resolution authorizing the nonrenewal of Dr. Carol Baker's administrator contract. The resolution also states the district will not reemploy Dr. Baker as a teacher for the 2021 school year. So may I have a motion to approve Resolution 20.1 authorizing the nonrenewal of Dr. Carol Baker's administrator contract and dismissal as a probationary teacher effective June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cheval, second by Mr. Turk. Is there any discussion? Seen none. W., call the roll, please.
Member Hirschman.
Aye.
Member Cheval.
Aye.
Member Hansen.
Aye.
Member Hell.
Aye.
Member Turk.
Aye.
Member Pollak.
Aye.
Member Camden.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to the Board President's Report. I'm gonna, I'm gonna switch with you this time, if that's okay, and flip and do the superintendent's report first. Thank you.
Just a few things. Actually, we're starting back up here for the second semester. I did do my Wednesday walkthrough, so it's almost sort of like deja vu of August. I happened to do Wednesday walkthroughs on the first student day. So first, I was over at Hinsdale South, and my colleague, the Director of Counseling, was with me that day. Everyone had a previous meeting that she needed to be at. And so it was also a wonderful time, because it was fourth hour, normally on their second hour, I was coming from a meeting as well. And so we were actually able to go in the cafeteria and hang out with kids with lunch and interact and sort of see how everyone's bricks went, and just sort of see what fourth period lunch looks like in Hinsdale South. So I did appreciate that. We were also, some of the elective classes we were popping into, it was just sort of nice to see the difference, get-to-know-you activities that the teachers were doing, because this was the first time that the student had had that teacher, because it was a new course from them. I also had the opportunity to learn all about inertia. We walked into a freshman physics honors class, and they were in the middle of describing it and doing a project with bowling balls and marbles. And so we actually stood in that space longer to make sure we had the answer correct from Dr. Bonner. And so I thoroughly appreciated the opportunity to watch the students really collectively come up on what inertia is through demonstration and activity. So it was pretty fun. And then Principal Bosch and I walked Central that afternoon, and we were able to go in and out a couple AP classes in English, but what was most interesting in the AP psych class, they were listening to, they could choose, using their Chromebooks on different TED Talks around the unhealthy piece around social media. And so the students were listening to different topics and learning about it, and why social media perhaps can and is causing the mental health issues that perhaps individuals experience both as a teenager and adult. And that was the topic that day. And that was sort of interesting to walk around and see some of the different selections that the students were choosing to listen to around social media. So as always, Wednesdays are my favorite day of the week, and that was wonderful. Later, we're going to hear about summer school, and I just really want to, I happened to have my monthly meeting today. We actually hosted all our feeder superintendents, and they have been terrific. I was sharing with them some of our calendar information and really working collaboratively, and really happy to share working closely for this summer with Dr. Schneider from Burr Ridge, as they have been working with us to be the host site for our summer school. And the following summer, we'll be at Marker School for the following summer, when we will continue to need an alternative space because of the construction we're doing on, and cannot thank our feeder superintendents enough for their cooperation and collaboration.
Okay, thank you. I'll move back to my president's report. I wanted to just speak a little bit about the resolution about Dr. Baker. Was nonrenewed for reasons other than a reduction in force. It's a personnel matter. We are not at liberty to provide any information additionally above what is beyond and included in the resolution. Our decision regarding Dr. Baker will not alter or impact the curriculum alignment efforts that have and will continue to be led by our teachers, department chairs, principals, and assistant principals for curriculum and instruction. This includes the development and implementation of our new science sequence. Several of our teachers and our science department chairs are scheduled to provide an update regarding their work on the sequences during the board meeting on January 23rd. We invite and encourage people to either attend or livestream the meeting to learn more about the sequence and the next steps involving the rollout in the fall. Finally, a few people have referenced a conversation the board had about curriculum equity in its meeting January 7th, 2019. So it included a discussion the group had about a document featured in board packet titled Curriculum Equity Department Chairs. A couple of things about that document, we just wanted, I just want to make clear. One, this was something when we were talking a year ago about personnel. It was about the difference between division chairs and department heads. This really wasn't about the substantive curriculum that the schools were going to undertake. At that time, the department chairs were directed to come up with a plan, how it would work if it was under the current department chair structure versus a division head model. That information was worked on, and again, the Science Department Chair for Hinsdale South will be here on January 23rd, and we can ask that question. But after my conversations with her, it was, the two Science Department chairs worked as quickly as they could before winter break to get that information done and compiled and come up with their plan. They did not seek any input from their teachers. They did not go and gather any other information from community members. It was really the two of them working, and how would they work under a department chair model? So at that point, at that meeting, you know, we listened, and I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was no directive to continue to pursue. And as a matter of fact, shortly thereafter, when Superintendent Law announced his resignation, this whole thing really was rebooted and retooled, and had much more involvement with the teachers and the department chairs and the assistant principals and the principals and everyone working together. So we're going to hear more about that at the January 23rd meeting, but I just want to set, I just wanted to talk about that January meeting of last year. Moving on to administration, the Summer School 2020 proposed program and budget. So I'd like to introduce our two summer school principals, Sarah Parrott and Sue Grady, who will present to you our plans for summer school for this year.
Thanks, hi everybody. So you already heard that the summer school is moving to, sorry, Sarah, moving to the middle school due to the construction constraints. And it poses a few problems. Mostly, what we are encountering is a lack of parking, and that's going to provide some transportation issues for families. We will be encouraging kids to be dropped off or take buses. There will also be a, perhaps, a drop off at Hinsdale South. But mostly, we will be working with the middle school for technology, getting our summer school teachers familiar with using the technology at the middle school, and dealing with the parking, again, will be a problem. Driver's education, however, will be at Hinsdale South and at Hinsdale Central, as well as some of the math camp and the technology camp.
Like Sue mentioned, transportation, or, I'm sorry, we're going to talk about the program of studies. So we are happy to say that even with the change in location, we're still able to offer a strong program of studies. We have a nice variety of core classes and enrichment opportunities for all students. We reached out to the department chairs to see if there was anything they wanted to add, and we are happy to offer a new AP opportunity for our students. And we're hoping to get registration up and running by March 1st, and then close it out in the middle of April, knowing that we might have to be a little flexible with some students who are registering late.
So again, back to the transportation, that will be really our biggest problem, and hopefully that will be worked out with the grants, with the transportation, the busing, and making really clear communication to families that kids cannot park there. And hopefully, with that being on the website and being communicated, that it should not be a problem. There will be no parking at Hinsdale Central because of the construction, so kids from Hinsdale Central can possibly go to Hinsdale South and Park, and then take a shuttle bus to Hinsdale Middle School. We will have a security person there directing traffic and making sure that everyone's getting in and out safely.
So then the last thing we want to touch on is budget. So we've been working really hard to figure out how to become cost neutral, so we did end up increasing student tuition by $50, making a semester course $300. And then at this time, we're still waiting on the rental cost from Burr Ridge to get that number in our budget. And I think we have a proposed budget, if we could pull that up. So you guys can take a look at that. But again, we're still waiting on a few numbers for that report. Okay? And then, do you guys have any questions?
Thank you, nice job. And it looks like you guys put a lot of work into it, so appreciate it. Is the, maybe it's not, is the increase in cost due to our increase in cost due to our construction? So the cost, if we didn't do construction, it was at one of the schools, the cost would still go up 50? And we're, I don't want to burden the community due to the, the construction, if that's why the cost went up.
Josh can speak to the numbers. Summer school has been a very expensive proposition for the district for a while.
So the cost increase is not related to the construction? If you look at the historical budgets, you see that typically, summer school does run a deficit. The increase in the tuition cost was to try to minimize that or to make summer school cost neutral as a whole. We understand, obviously, these next two summers, with the offset nature of summer school, we're going to be incurring costs that we wouldn't normally. Those are not being passed on, and I would anticipate, obviously, the next two summers, we will run a deficit based on those additional expenses. But will we, you know, to see kind of, as things normalize, once we return to one of our campuses for summer school, what the actual impact on the overall budget is?
Great, thanks, appreciate that. And a follow-up one, is the school, is the Burr Ridge Middle School, is it set up with the same tech and the overheads where the delivery is going to be the same as they were at one of our campuses?
Yeah, so that was one of our concerns when we were touring the building, and they do have a lot of great technology, but I think our tech people will easily be able to communicate with their tech people to make sure that our teachers are supported in the projectors, computer laptops and whatnot. I believe they have the same Epson projectors that we have, which is good. There was something with potential laptop carts, maybe? Yeah, so we will be bringing over some laptop carts too for our incoming freshmen who won't have Chromebooks yet.
Okay, thanks. And we'll be making another psych visit to kind of hide the getting loaded on and up on the screen and all of that. So, good job.
A question looking at the salary expenses there. Just a question on why, you know, in 19, we have some gaps that we normally saw in the previous years, and 20, we have some, some, put back in some gaps that, again, we had in previous years, again, grant classes, inclusion, librarians, salaries, supervisor salaries. Is there a reason why those aren't included in the 20 budget, why we didn't see them in 19? Are those rolled up into the regular classes line now, or why there'd be some gaps there?
So they were rolled up into the regular class line for the last year, and just depending on what the needs are for this year, if we need to break it out further, we will, but it was rolled up for the last year.
I like that idea of the express bus coming from Hinsdale South, and I, you know, for Hinsdale Central students, it's even farther to Burr Ridge Middle School. And I don't know if Elm School, or if there's other school districts that, you know, it seems for students that are driving here to drive to Hinsdale South to go back to Burr Ridge Middle School, and especially with that pretty tough tardy policy that I know that we've got, you know, that could be problems. So I don't know if there's other schools or other options, or...
We're working with Hinsdale South to know exactly what they're available. There will be actually spaces, so is that phasing piece, get to know in terms of how much of equipment. Victor from Gower has also offered his parking lot as a shuttle piece. So they are on board. It's just that as they gather the registration informations and as the construction planning happens here on campus, as we get a better idea, we are just communicating loud and strab that there is no student parking at the middle school, and we're working on shuttle ideas. But absolutely, the, all feeders are happy to help. The problem is at the elementaries, they are very limited in their parking space, period. But, right, so Gower, but Gower has offered the middle school as a shuttle spot as well. We're just waiting for the data.
I like the new programs. I like the little new flyer, and it's good to see.
I can't take credit back. We borrowed that.
All right, well, I liked, I liked it.
I thought borrowed was stealing.
Yeah, I liked it. And then how are you guys going to get the word out to the students that it's time to enroll? And I know we've had some questions about that in the past, and when will that start?
Sarah and I are meeting with whoever it is that is in charge of the website. We're still getting to know people's names, I apologize, and we'll be getting that all rolled out. We're going to try by, by March 1st.
Yeah, we're hoping to have the website available a little bit earlier, and then I've been talking with Karen Saken, the DCX South, and some of her teachers, and what we want to do in terms of marketing for our freshman seminar course, and communicating with middle school teachers and making sure that we get the information out. So I think we have a lot of good plans for what we want to do to push the information out, and then hopefully with our goals of an earlier start date in terms of the registration, we'll be able to see that through.
I wonder if we could put up like a landing page, or coming soon, or just start talking about it? I know that other, other districts have it, and just a way to, okay, go.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll use all the platforms that we have available, so I'll work with both of our summer school principals to take advantage of social media, the updates for 86 emails, placeholder on the website, we'll handle all of that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any out there? Nope. Okay, thanks so much, you guys, thanks. Moving on to Chief Human Resources Officer Manas Calco with the 2020 Open Enrollment Tallys.
Thank you, President Bosch. So there isn't much to add to the report. The open enrollment season for calendar year 2020 ended at the end of November, and these are just tallies to show the board where the utilization rates are going to be for this calendar year amongst all staff. When we first implemented our 125 cafeteria plan for our insurances for PPO, HMO, our high deductible plans back in 2014, 15, these are the percentages that we were hoping for long-term. So I'm happy to say, back then, we were hoping to get to these sort of numbers, and we finally got there five-ish years later. I would say the biggest success out of the open enrollment season is the fact that our HMO is our strongest utilization plan now. It is a controlled cost in terms of the network staff can seat physicians in, and that represents 36% of the overall staff, so we are really excited to see that. We are continuing to monitor our benefit plans, because it is something that is running pretty high, and 2019 numbers were larger than expected in terms of our insurance costs. So we will hold our next insurance committee meeting in early March, in where we will look at 2019 numbers, as well as first quarter for 2020.
I don't anticipate you'll have this for this evening, but maybe you and Josh, can you give us, give the board a comparison of where our district stacks up in benefit utilization choices with our comparable districts? of where our district stacks up on benefit utilization choices with our comparable districts? I'd like to see, kind of compare apples to apples on that point. And it would be helpful to maybe to see some dollars associated with the contributions and other things so the board can have a better sense. I know in insurance, we talked about the significant double digit low 20% increase in premium costs. That was, I understand, driven by enticing people to move over to HMO. The problem is they're there and now it's more expensive. So I'm just curious, in the universe of other districts, how do we shape up? What's PPO utilization like relative to other places?
Sure, yeah, I don't have that data today.
I just thought as we were looking.
Not a problem. Absolutely.
And I agree, thanks for bringing that up. I think it'd be an interesting comparison to see how we stack up. Also, how often do we educate our individuals on our insurance plans, even from our vendors? And why I bring it up is, I see some people, the high deductible plan has increased in a couple places. I think it's a fairly new product, meaning in the last maybe 10 years. But it's a highly beneficial product to certain, to a certain group if they know what it is. But it's, you know, you got, it takes some education to understand, you know, it sounds, you know, counterproductive, but high deductible plan, that sounds silly to, but it can be highly beneficial to individuals if they know of us. I just wondered, how often do we educate our individuals on the plans and how they work and how they're implemented?
Sure, so to be quite honest, not enough. Insurance is one of those things where people think about it only during open enrollment, within the 20 minute window in which we are assisting them. And it's a decision that really implements, you know, it affects them for the, for an entire calendar year. We spend a significant amount of time before open enrollment, our vendors are in the building. We spend almost a solid week before open enrollment kicks off in the faculty lounges with staff, talking to them about our plans. That is how we've had these utilization rates increase so much amongst the high deductible, which is now 23% of our overall staff. Initially, we thought it was going to be no more than 10, 15. So these are actually really great numbers. And so to answer your question about a week before open enrollment and then we spend a week during open enrollment, actually in the buildings with staff, doing open enrollment with them. But to be quite honest, we don't do it enough. We should do it more. Unfortunately, staff only think about insurance during open enrollment.
I mean, does it make sense that even if it's not having presentations, in-person presentations in front of them with the material, to keep it somewhat present in their minds throughout the year, like a quarterly, there's some sort of a newsletter or something that they're already receiving, tack it on as a page at the end, FYI, in case this is what the PPO is versus the HMO versus the HHB. And if you have a question, please, you know, reach out, you. And just try and figure that out. But just again, kind of from a drip campaign standpoint, so at least they're thinking about, maybe there's a light on that there's a change that's going on that might drive them to change insurance anyway. And now they're beginning to think about it a little earlier on the process.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, the board operational calendar is linked and provides a roadmap of agenda items to come to the board. Would any member of the board like to propose an agenda item for a future meeting? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to audience comments. Any speakers wishing to address the board should step forward. Each person will have three minutes to speak.
I always love it when board members create revisionist history. But the good news is that there are board minutes that reflect what actually took place on January 7th, not 2019. So people in this community, I would encourage, don't just listen to Board President Pollock who claims that what people appear are saying is false, but go back and watch the video and go back and read the minutes. Because what you'll find out is that the discussion on curriculum equity on that date was supposed to focus on the leadership structure, but it turned into much more after Dr. Baker and then Dr. Law admitted for the first time publicly that curriculum inequity existed with courses in this district. Vice President Camden and President Carpenter and a couple other board members who are no longer here, Jennifer Planson were appalled. And one can go back and listen to how horrified they were that this admission was finally being made and it needed to be addressed. Continuing in that discussion, and I'm going to read from the minutes, there were in fact, plans that had been developed, at least by the department chairs in the science department, on putting together a curriculum equity plan that would bring more options to both schools, similar to Nutri-Rs. And Baker, this is from the minutes, quote, Baker said she was impressed with the work of the department chairs in pulling their report together. And a full cost out and evaluation of the plan would still need to occur. Pollock asked about the science strand offerings that are student driven, saying she likes where this is headed but is not certain that it is affordable to offer. And Planson said she would like to see more about this. So that's what I was talking about earlier. There was a multiple science sequence strand that they didn't just slap together willy nilly right before Christmas break. But Dr. Baker complimented the department chairs. Back then, it was Lisa Fernandez who mysteriously disappeared from Hinsdale Central and was reassigned to the other school, when apparently she didn't play ball, and agreed to go to a single science sequence strand. That's what people in the community know happened, or at least have been told happened, by insiders. So you can sit here and you can talk about how we make things up, but the reality is that the past department chair and the current Hinsdale South department chair came together, worked very hard, even got complimented by Dr. Baker on a multiple science sequence strand. And you, President Pollock, liked where it was going because it provided student driven choices. And then you said, but can we afford it? And Jennifer Planson wanted to know more about that. And that information never came back to this board. Thank you.
Hi. I wanted to address a couple of smaller items for sure. And.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure, Lori Thompson, Clemente Hills. This is probably only my second time speaking. The first time I spoke was November 5th. I believe that was a year ago. I believe that was the day before the referendum vote for that timeframe. And there were American politics students in the background. And they were there to witness as part of their course. But you know, students as we know are very involved. And we wanted to have a representative from the pursuit to win the referendum to talk and to just say, we're here still. And I told them, I told the kids that night that we got you, we hear you. And then the next day, we lost. And it was one of the roughest nights as a parent that I ever had. Because the community, many from both sides, still not known yet how many more we are going to grow for the next vote. But we got together, we started to work hard and we tried our best. We learned. And I think we needed to fail and figure it out before we could come up with the winning formula where we substantially won. And we came together as a group and we became friends. I met so many people and I have so much, I'm so impressed by so many of the people that I met from both schools. I never had interaction with Hinsdale South before. And now I call many friends. What we haven't done is capitalized on that. And I don't know why. I, we have a lot of animosity in the group, but it's because we don't come out and talk about what's good. And what's good is the people. It doesn't matter what school you're from. When are we going to start to hear about the celebration that we're going to hear about, you know, walking through the schools? Mr. Welsh, when we have the gentleman from the construction company who talked about both schools, it's irrelevant what building we are looking at. Everyone in the room was so impressed. And the gentleman, I'm so sad that I can't remember his name, he acted like a grandfather to every student. But to the school building itself, he felt this responsibility. So I think that we need to focus on that. Secondly, 20 seconds left, I would like to talk about G-Track Math. I know that Nutri-R does a, has something where you can collapse a program. And it's for those who need to get through math faster. And it's a double class per day. Some students can do it, some cannot. Can we look into a pilot program so that for the students who become good learners later on in their high school career can leapfrog? Can really start to.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
You know, I'd sort of like to, you know, build off of what Mrs. Thompson said. And I'd also like to give a big, you know, thank you to Adolf. And I have a question for the entire assembled group. As Mr. Adolf said, and I completely agree, the suggestion about this AP CM has not been talked about online. And that tells me, because I know a lot about what gets discussed online, that there's some reason that didn't happen. I don't know what that reason is, but I would ask each and every one of you, each and every one of you, to figure out why that was. Towards that end, again, building on what Mrs. Thompson said, I'm going to quote another thing. But I mentioned Los Angeles before. I'm going to use a quote from another infamous, famous Los Angelino. Why can't we all get along? I don't really care about the internal workings of personnel matters. I frankly feel kind of awful that, you know, somebody's got to look for a new job. But there's no reason why we can't implement what Mrs. Thompson talked about and what Mr. Adolf talked about at both schools for all students very quickly. We have a very talented group of leaders. Please consider that. We just talked, heard about everything that's going to be moved to get the parking working for the summer schools. Why can't we put that same effort into getting what the kids need at both schools? Why is that? Why, why do we have to be separated? Why can't folks from one part of the district and another part of the district all say, yes, we've been made whole just like we wanted to when there was discussion prior to the agreement to move forward with the referendum? This is just mind boggling to me. And it makes me just want to completely detach from this whole process. I cannot for the life of me understand why you don't want to make that possible and that possible and give more opportunity to more kids. It's not about the egos of any teacher or any administrator or any elected official. It's about getting the right programs in place for all the kids in this district. And I don't see agreement in that direction right now. And it really scares the crap out of me. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sue. And thank you.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Linda Burke. A couple of things, an Intel semifinalist today is news today. If he gets to be a finalist, it's news several weeks from now. It's news now. As it is in other parts of the country where they value this participation. But I'm, but thank you, Mr. Walter. You know, happy you're addressing it, but time is right now. Okay, he's a semifinalist now. Next, as far as district harmony is concerned, bringing people back together. The last speaker at the first audience communication is just misinformed about something. And it's pretty serious. The speaker, I feel, correct me if I'm wrong, suggested that. The people who wish to, who question physics and the universe for all just want the status quo where one high school had a different program and more options than the other. I don't know a single person in the movement for a better science curriculum who thinks that way. We all want equity. We want equity in the form of more opportunities for all. We feel that a choice of strands is the way to achieve that. And already, physics and the universe, again, undefined. Can, we hear different stories about what it even is, is being imposed uniformly on Hinsdale South. But Central has a one-year reprieve, then a two-year reprieve. We certainly hope for both high schools an indefinite reprieve because this isn't over. I mean, there are too many people in this community who know what a high school science curriculum needs to be if you're going on to serious college STEM. We hear a lot from our recent graduates. We just heard from two recent graduates at MIT. No one at the leadership table appeared to have any curiosity. So we need alignment in the direction of more science options, not less. The entire situation is a five alarm emergency. The loss of a junior level AP physics, leaving a gap between physics and the universe and physics CM, which has been extensively discussed online, especially by Bertie Pax, who's of course, a physics CM teacher at Fenwick. To lead that gap is uncontrollable. Finally, the, this, every one at the leadership table needs to apologize for what happened on December 12th. Of course, how can we believe that teachers aren't being intimidated when speakers at audience communication have their mic forcibly removed when they're not saying anything remotely illegitimate or personal? Every, if Dr. Bruce Law had been here, one, he would have been smart enough to know it was against the law. And two, he would have had the moral fiber to say, stop, we can't do this, it's wrong. But you guys could have just been paralyzed with shock. You can, you can make it right by every single person apologizing to all who had their freedom of speech suppressed. And you can show that you actually value freedom of speech. I was shocked out of my mind by December 12th.
Okay, is there any members of the board who would like to comment on anything they've heard?
At least with respect to revisions history or other such allegations, it was stated earlier that Tammy was the superintendent in January of 2019. That is flatly, unequivocally false. She didn't become the superintendent until June 1st of 2019?
May.
Pardon me, May. Dr. Law was the superintendent in June. And with respect to, pardon me, January. With respect to apologizing for suppression of First Amendment rights, I'm sorry, Ms. Burke, I don't agree. It was not a suppression of First Amendment rights. It had to do with attacking people personally. The board has had a practice in place for years. We don't allow people to come in and attack individuals. I understand we may disagree. But I'm not going to apologize for supporting what we've done. If somebody came in here to attack a teacher, a groundskeeper, an aide, we wouldn't stand for it either.
Are there any members of administration who would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So.
Sorry. Motion by Ms. Hirschman, second by Mr. Turk, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We are adjourned at, where's my timekeeper? 8:33 PM.